We would invite all who cares to join us in the recitation of Lord's Prayer, followed by a moment of silence. Our Father, who art in heaven, how will it be thy name? Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who have passed against us, and lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. It is now seven o'clock. Show the city councilman's call order to show me the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Mr. Trump.
Mr. Robb here. Mr. Roberts here. Mr. Gates here. Mr. Martin here. Mr. McLaughlin here.
I now entertain a motion to discuss the reading of the draft on May the second, two thousand twenty-two.
See, I move.
Mr. Robb with the motion, and Mr. Roberts with the second. And the discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin. Mr. Robb here. Mr. Roberts. Mr. Gates.
Yeah.
That motion passes. Now come to the side for public comment. Anyone cares to address to a council this evening and make his comments, now is your time. We do have the post on the agenda here, and she's still coming a little bit later. But if not, I'll be presenting the proclamation a little bit later on here at the agenda. No public comment, all right. We'll move to reports from standing special committees. I am the personnel committee, Councilman Gates.
Mayor, thank you very much. Committee met last Thursday. Turn to the back page of the report and look at the city income tax. Look at the chart at the bottom, which are the collections by month. And you can see that in April of this year, we brought in nearly one and a quarter million dollars in income tax revenues. Now, there's a couple of explanations for that. One is that we did get one particular payment of three hundred and ten thousand dollars, so that will obviously not lie there. But also, in the previous two calendar years, tax collections have not been in April. Deadline's not been in April, so the deadline is in April this year. So we saw some collections that last year were not received until May, and then the year before that, I think, was July. So that's some explanation for that. But even if you, you know, back out the three hundred and ten thousand dollars, you can see that that's, you know, an extraordinary amount. And you can look up at the top and see what what we received for the year, about two point four million dollars. So in April alone, we collected half of what we have for the year. Now, once you get past the April deadline, you know, things will start to even out, and maybe we can have some more clear direction, understanding of what income tax revenues are going to be for the year. But so far, so good. So with that, let's take a look at the at the front page. First half real estate taxes were or received in April, so that is, those monies are reflected in particularly in park and in health, also in police and fire pension, and to some extent in the general fund. We've gone through thirty-three percent of the year. If you look down at the bottom, you can see that we've received thirty-six percent of the anticipated revenues and have expended twenty-eight percent of the appropriations. So that gives, you know, very quick and dirty as to how things are going. Let's look at specifics. Up to the general fund, in cash, the end of April, about one point seven million dollars. Free and clear, about one and a half million dollars. So the change, three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars better this year than last year. Again, noting that in health and park, we see good, good revenues there. Excuse me, I skipped past income tax, two twenty. You can see there's, we've had a balance of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars at the end of the month. Normally, what has happened for years and years and years is anything in excess of fifty thousand dollars is then transferred to general fund capital improvements and anywhere else. We had some concern last year when we had one particular large income tax payment. Concern about the possibility of having to make a refund there. So we didn't want to be in a position where, for example, the general fund would have to make a payment to the income tax fund, so the income tax fund could then make the refund. We've kept that balance in there artificially high. We had a brief discussion on that. You know, we'll see what happens there. I'll leave that to the good judgment of the finance director as to what that should be. But again, we had one large payment last year. That same company has made another large payment this year. Wouldn't we love that that becomes the norm instead of the exception? But, you know, one never knows. And you can see, if you look at the the cash balance in April of twenty-one, you can see that fifty thousand dollars is there. So now, of course, if we move a big chunk of that money into the different funds, that then creates additional revenues for the general fund, for the capital improvement. This is just one member speaking here, perhaps out of turn. But, you know, what we're doing for street resurfacing is minimal at best. If there's a way that we could do more, possibly through a change order, I suppose this is the time to think about that, for the administration to think about that, discuss that with the contractor and go from there. But, you know, at the rate we're going, most of us, this member particularly, will be, you know, long, long into his reward before we get streets resurfaced in this town. The rest of you are in good shape, so don't take any fear from them. We'll continue down. The two eighty-four, the local fiscal recovery fund. We see four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That's half of the money that we should get. We expect the second half of that, I believe, in, in May. He's looking at the finance director, who's not sure, but at some point, I know there's something has to happen on the state level before those monies come to us. So as of April, the end of April, those monies have not been transferred into the general fund. So when that happens, again, we're going to see this, you know, this huge bounce in the, in the general fund, huge increase. But we know we have some outliers that caused that. Again, it would be wonderful for a pattern, but that's not going to be the case. Going down the line, four hundred, the sewer fund, a hundred and three thousand dollars cash, forty-eight thousand dollars in the free and clear after encumbrances. In a similar way, at water, three hundred and two thousand dollars in cash, but only fifty-four thousand dollars free and clear. Now, the water fund, and one reason for that is that because the cost of chemicals has been going up faster than the rate of inflation for a good decade now. The wise decision is made to, you know, to buy chemicals now. Get, you know, water we can at a lower price, to the extent we have place to store them. That's some explanation for, for the balance there in that fund. Electric and telecommunications, a little over five million dollars there. Going down to hospitalization, we had at the end of April, four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars there. A little, you know, it's, it's run at various times, around six hundred thousand dollars. But when there are some significant claims, which I understand there have been, that's going to come down. Now, it's, if we get, I think it's around three hundred thousand dollars is when the insurance administrators get, get antsy about it. And we would get antsy too. But, you know, that, that fund is subject to whatever claims we have at any particular time. It's something we can't, we can't predict, you know, the health of our employees. Going to the next page. The total budget in two thousand twenty-two. Revenues of exceeded expenditures by one point four million dollars. In the general fund, revenues of exceeded expenditures by three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. That's a good thing. Looking down to bottom where we get the breakdown in the income tax. The individual tax, looking at the three-year average, is up nearly seventy-seven percent. Business, again, because we had that one particular large payment, is up almost three hundred percent. You know, those are just extraordinary unpredictable revenues. We're glad to have them, but again, don't, don't bet the farm on those. Withholding, which is the closest of the three we have to real time, is up twenty-six percent over last year for the withholding. So that's our, our best predictor to look at here and now is what the individual taxes are. Now, again, with individual and businesses, as we get later onto the year, those percentages are going to drop significantly, I have no doubt. And then we'll have, you know, can look at the three of them and, and come up with some sort of prediction or conclusion. But as right now, withholding is the only one that we need to look at. Next page, where we have the breakout on utilities. We had expenditures in wastewater this year, four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Last year, it was three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Water treatment expenditures of six hundred and, six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. That's up over the five hundred and fifty-six, but again, we're looking at the, the chemicals that we, we pre-bought, so to speak. The administrative costs is being done differently this year. What had happened in past years is after we had passed the appropriations ordinance at the end of March, then come April, there would be transfers of four months' worth of administrative funds into the general fund, the administrative cost. The finance director is doing that differently this year. What he's doing is taking the administrative cost and dividing it by nine. So the nine months' worth, and which minimizes the, the great impact, the, the sticker shock, so to speak, on the funds that pay into the bigger administrative cost. So, you know, come the end of the year, all that administrative cost that has, has been approved by council will have been paid, but done in a different way, so again, to minimize the sticker shock. Cash investment reconciliation. As of the end of April, in the city treasury, there was a balance of sixteen million, six hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars and two cents. But again, we can see the, how that has been allocated between Civista, PNC, Park National, and US Bank. If you looked at that last line, by and large, US Bank is the prime depository for the city, a little over twelve million dollars of the sixteen. Next page is the SUTR Roush. That has done some, some growth since the first of the year. And of course, the last page on the income tax, I've already discussed that. There, we looked at, discussed in personnel. You mentioned a number of resignations and a retirement and some promotions. Zach Wilson has resigned from the fire department. Alex Miller, lineman, has resigned. Ken Esterlein, who will retire at the end of this month from the service department, with thirty-two-plus years of service with the city. Had two promotions, Sean Nolan as sergeant in the police department and Sam Sauter in the, in the fire department. You had shared with us that there are people bidding with unit eighteen S on job openings. That kind of sets up a domino effect, that someone goes from one department to another, then that leaves that opening. Those will shake out at some point, except I suppose at the end we'll end up hiring someone from the outside. So that's usually what happens. We talked at some length about the position of code enforcement officer. There's quite a bit yet to be decided regarding that position, whether it will be a full-time position, a part-time position, seasonal position, whether the position will be classified or unclassified. And then, you know, as far as, you know, some specifics as to what the the position will require the holder to do. And then there's the whole topic of, you know, what will the compensation be for that position? So that's an ongoing discussion that will happen. Mayor, I think that concludes everything that I wish to bring forward. If my colleague, Mr. Martin wishes to add anything, or the finance director, I would certainly help him.
Are there any other comments or questions from councilman Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I move that the combined financial statement and the cash investment reconciliation statement, both dated April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, be received, placed on file, and posted to the city's website.
See. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin. That the combined financial statement and the cash investment reconciliation statement, both dated April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, be received, placed on file, and posted to the city website. Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Martin.
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
Mr. Gates.
Yeah.
That motion passes. Thank you, Councilman Gates.
Mayor McGraw-Locklin.
Move next to utilities and streets committee, Councilman Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Utilities streets also met on Thursday, and we discussed a few topics here, so get right into it. First thing we did was we had a briefing on the Ohio WARN program, W A R N. Stands for Ohio Water Wastewater Agency Response Network. Essentially, to, I don't know, not to go too in depth on this, is a mutual aid agreement, similar to what we have for electric utilities. It covers disasters and also non-disasters. So for example, when we were short on staff because of some COVID, we could have activated this to give it some help, so that we weren't stressing our personnel like we did. But it also covers disasters, of course, emergency situations, like, for example, water plants in the day with floodwater, or, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So very similar to the mutual aid program, and supposed to maintain public health, sanitation, safety during a time of need. How we become a member is resolution authorizing a support agreement. And the benefits, it is no cost to us and no obligation as well. So again, very similar to the mutual aid agreements we have. We're able to share the resources, and we are able to, allows our agencies to be involved with the national incident management system, which offers some free training and directory of agencies, et cetera, with that. So look forward to that coming down the pipe, I'm sure. All right. Lead service line inventory and mapping grant update. This is for the phase two project. The grant application was submitted to the Ohio EPA on April fifth, and we saw the full allowable amount per water system, that was fifty thousand dollars, and that full amount was granted. So there's forty-eight public water systems that have received the grant for the notification that was sent out, and we were one of those. So they had us as a village on there, not a city, but, you know, still gets fifty thousand dollars anyway, so they can call us whatever they want, if they send us fifty thousand dollars on a regular basis. All right. So our cap will, of course, be assisting us with the identification and mapping process. Homes built in the nineteen fifties would be suspected of having lead or galvanized pipes, we discussed in the past. Homes built in the eighties, or eighties, I guess, to present, would not be suspected of having that. So there's going to be a mass mailing going out to sort of city water customers, that we're going to ask them for assistance and identifying material, and then field work will be necessary. And workhorse is going to come on that from our, our cap representatives on the next steps. CSX railroad crossings. They are scheduling two cross-rides crossings to be upgraded, West Main Street and West Mile Avenue. They've already opened the parallel cuts, the open parallel cuts have already been made at the crossings, and the tentative work dates have been cited for Monday, June twentieth. The crossings will be closed for an estimated three days. We're waiting on confirmation, we believe that's a total of three days, not three days for one, three days for the other, so. Once those dates are confirmed, of course, a note will be posted to the city website and sent out to an excellent. We then got a update on the technology. The technology Parkway culvert. There's retention pod, of course, on Technology Parkway to the east and to the west. The one on, I get this wrong, I know, but the west is retaining a higher water level than design. Nope, east. East is retaining a higher level than design, so it's supposed to move from east to west. Higher, the culverts, when they're put in, were put in too high, I guess, and so the water's not moving from east to west as it's supposed to be. So we are going to be fixing that. The three quotes have been provided to install the proposed eighteen-inch culvert. The lowest quote was twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty, and that legislation has been prepared for this evening's meeting. So that is on the culvert. All right. Community gardens. It is a time of year again. We hope it stays a time of year again, hope there's not some weird snow system that comes through, but, you know, strange things happen. Anyways, community garden plots have been tilled and are ready for planting. Garden plots are located on the north side of the water treatment plant on North Campbell. Gardeners are permitted to drive along the garden plots to access their plots. Please refrain from driving in the grassy area after rain events to avoid damaging the lawn. Rain barrels are located at the front of the tool shed for water implants. Garden tools are available, tools are okay in the tool shed. To borrow any of the tools, please visit the utilities office, sign on key. Residents seeking to reserve a plot or have questions about the garden can call utilities office for information, four one nine three four two four zero eight five. That's all that's that. All right. Second class, I suppose, but our annual warning to people on grass clippings. So as the weather improves, obviously, we're cutting our grass, or at least it should be, if not, you know, I guess this would be a wheat notice thing as well, so cut your grass. But when you do cut your grass, please refrain from putting the grass clippings into the streets, alleys, sidewalks, or other right-of-way public lands. So that can flood up our storm sewer grates and our catch basins and prevent the storm water from draining properly from the streets, and that causes flooding issues on the streets around the catch basin. So please dispose of your grass clippings in an appropriate manner, and please, cut your grass. All right. Water meter replacement program update. It is still ongoing. Six hundred and eighty meters still need to be replaced. However, we have replaced eighty-four percent of the meters in town, so we are getting there. Had a little bit of a delay because of COVID, but we're back on track, finish by the end of the year or early part of next year. The typical change off per meter takes approximately thirty minutes, so they're, they're efficient at this, and we're getting pretty good at it, so we're, and we're chugging along there. So, you know, beginning part of next year, this will be completed, and we'll be on to the next, next projects of utility. Mayor, that is my report.
Thank you, Councilman Martin. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Martin in regard to his report? Appreciate it very much, thank you. Safety. Councilman Rock.
See, sir. Safety met on May fourth. Chief Thompson reported that civil service commission would meet and that Sam Sauter would be promoted to captain, and be sworn in on May twelfth. Shelby fires in need of new O-two bottles. Current bottles are nearing their expected life, which is about fifteen years, and, you know, have to be replaced. Tonight, council will consider Resolution thirty-one and a community giving grant from TC Energy. And if awarded, this money would be used to purchase the new bottles. Both Chief Thompson and Chief Combs would like to see council act to restrict the use of fireworks inside the city limits. So as we, as we progress with our safety meetings, we will, we will talk more about that and maybe some other, some other changes also. Let's see, health news. Citywide cleanup will be held from June fourth through the, you know, first through the fourth. Fire was sent out with the last round of utility bills. Nine nuisances were on books, with two, two sent to the prosecutor, and applications were being looked at to replace the director of nurse. Police news, civil service commission would be certifying, certifying nine candidates for the open dispatcher position. Police department currently is downing three officers, and that is, it's difficult at this point to hire officers, there is not, nobody's there. The ones that are there are maybe not worth having here at Shelby, so it's becoming an issue, and, you know, we need to try to figure some way to, we're getting more out, our officers are getting more out, and we need to die as people. And finally, Memorial Day parade is going to take a different route this year because of the construction, so we're going to go from Bolivar to Main Street, left on the High School Avenue to Park Avenue, and then right on Tucker. And anybody not pursuing to the cemetery can be picked up at the car wash as soon as possible.
Thank you, Councilman Roberts. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Robertson regarding his report? Mr. Martin.
Just a question, so on the, the fireworks legislation, this is the, kind of the first year that we've had kind of unrestricted. So we're looking to restrict something that we don't know is a problem yet?
We, we think it's going to be a problem. Both chiefs think it's going to be a problem, and they, you know, they laid out some, you know, from, from the fire issue, it's obviously, you know, I mean, there's all kinds of bad stuff that could happen. From a police issue to safety issue, from a police, their point of view, it's a safety issue. Like I said, it's something we're not talking about. You know, what we come up with, we don't know yet, but if that is what, then we'd like to happen, and, you know, where there's wayway, that's just something we're not talking about.
Mr. Martin.
I mean, even, you know, obviously, Fourth of July is right around the corner, even if we did, you know, miraculously get legislation before us the first of June, it's not going to go through three readings before the Fourth of July, so I think that it'd probably be wise to wait till after the Fourth of July season to actually make sure that we're addressing the, you know, the actual concerns that happen versus, you know, trying to push something through so quickly before the Fourth of July, because I think it's not going to make it for this year anyways.
We don't have another, we won't have another safety meeting until, if we, you know, anyway, so I don't, I don't see that. It should be a problem.
Any other comments, questions? All right, thank you. Looking forward to reports of city officials the last couple of weeks on either side of a vacation, conducting typical mayoral duties. May the third, decided the board of health meeting. On May the fourth, we held a successful bid opening for Black Fork Commons Project. Hooray. Maybe Mr. Gates will say more about that. I was out of the office from the fifth through the twelfth, well, thank Mr. Ister for stepping up to the plate there and taking care of issues that were in the mayoral capacity, so thank you, sir. On the twelfth, I had the privilege of swearing in Mr. Sam Sauter to the position of fire captain in the fire department. I've taken Captain, former Captain Bob Bean's place there, since he retired. On the twelfth, also anticipated a Zoom meeting of the community action commission of the area here on Marston County on that board of advisors. Let's note that the Shuttetown Department has officially submitted all of our Let's note that the show, the health department has officially submitted all of our A card documentation to FAB. So that's the accreditation, community action requirements, then we've submitted, and then they said we want, we need more of these documents improved, so. We, we put all those together, say we. Miss, Miss DeParrad and Jennifer Fraser and Lauren, our consultant, did a great, great job putting all these things together. So that's submitted to the public health accreditation board. Hopefully, they'll hear back August, September, it's going to take a lot, while, maybe they'll hear back sooner, but if you're good about what we submitted, so we're looking for the results in the early fall, late summer, early fall. Councilman Martin and Councilman Roberts stole my thunder on grass mowing, and so thank you for mentioning that. I know it's been challenging with the rains we've had, but encourage everyone to keep up their mowing, and certainly do not want grass cut things out on the roadway. Not only for the stormwater system, but also motorcycles and so forth like that as well. And then mention the parade, very, very happy to have a parade here this year, able to reroute that, and we'll work together to make that happen. I don't think that's about all, gentlemen, are there any questions for me in the document report? I will present the proclamation designating May as poppy month. And again, we'll present this to Ms. Linda Close here tomorrow. Whereas the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the American Legion Auxiliary of the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since nineteen twenty-two, as of a hundred years, right? And whereas American Legion Auxiliary Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans at the Ohio Veterans Home in Sandusky, Ohio. And the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans and widows and orphans of deceased veterans. And whereas the basic purpose of the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the auxiliary is eloquently reflected in the desire to, quote, honor the dead by helping the living, end quote. Now therefore, I, Stephen L. Shag, mayor of the city of Shelby, Ohio, do hereby urge the citizens of this community to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through your donations for Buddy Poppies and the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our honored dead. Furthermore, I urge all patriotic citizens to wear a Buddy Poppy as a mute evidence of gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens who are celebrating Poppy Days. In witness whereof, I herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the city of Shelby this sixteenth of May, two thousand twenty-two. And if I recall my conversation with Ms. Close, I believe those Poppies will be available here towards the end of the week for donations. There we are. All right, let's move on to our next city official report, Mr. Crum.
Thanks, sir. As Mr. Gates very well put most of my fun news into, into the report array, so thank you very much for that. Things going on in my department, the conversion of our financial statements to generally accepted counter principles is almost done. They're just waiting on a couple of little pieces of documentation to go to them. So I would expect that to be wrapped up within the next few weeks. The IT audit portion of our state audit is beginning now. I think Amber started sending documents over today for that, so that is, is underway. I think that the main portion of our audit will begin in June, so hopefully, we can get everything to them quickly, and then can dedicate staff to it to get it done quickly, and we'll go from there. The only other thing for me, I will be on vacation May twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. My tenth anniversary, and my wife would be less than thrilled with me if I were not on vacation those two days, so. I'll be out of the office those couple of days, but that'll be around. Sir's matter for?
Mr. Crum, are there any comments or questions for Mr. Crum in regard to his report? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, if the finance director could inquire of the state examiners when they expect to complete their audit of the city. I know this, I know half the finance committee will be very happy to, to know that date. Having received the twenty twenty audit very late in two thousand twenty-one, it is frustrating at best.
Thank you. Do the note. All right, let's move on to Mr. Ister, law director.
Thank you, Mayor. Other than forcing my wife and children to call me Mr. Mayor for a week, my role in that capacity went without a hitch. Thank you for leaving everything in good order before you left. Speaking of the prosecution of zoning infractions, I convicted one person today. I don't know when the other one is set for trial, you know, get it to him or send it to my office, we did do that today. FYI, we're getting ready to commence travel baseball season. Most Fridays for the summer for me, I'm marked off, you can catch me by cell phone or by email, so if you need something pressing, I would urge you to catch me Monday through Thursday. Otherwise, I'll be at about fifty ballgames in three different states, so. Other than that, no other major news.
Thank you, Mr. Ister. Any comments or questions, Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I want to thank the acting mayor, he during your absence issued a proclamation for Letter Carriers Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive Day. I took the original of that to the post office and gave it to the postmaster, and she was, I think, quite tickled to receive that, so thank him for that, and I want to thank everyone who sent food out by their mailboxes on Saturday for the letter carriers to pick up. That is a great benefit to the fish food pantry.
Thank you for bringing it up, thank you.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Ister, Mr. Gates, project coordinator.
Thank you, Mayor, early this evening at six thirty, we're going to have the second public hearing for the chip grant, so that application with the commissioner, they'll be looking at it tomorrow, the very final signature, and then we'll get that shipped off to the state for that. Our streetscape project is moving on. They will commence the west side square and move to the east side square on June the sixth, so that notice has been sent to ODOT. What that, when they do that, is that a twenty-one day notice for ODOT, ODOT puts that out, and they've got some sort of thing with all the GPS stuff. I notice it worked online, but it surely is not working for the little trucker, so. We've done a lot of different things to try to stop that, but we are meeting tomorrow to really try to look, once this is moved over, what other things we can do to try to, to solve this problem, so we are meeting on that tomorrow. Before the flip over, so. And as discussed by Black Forest Commons, signs of construction out of Ashland was a little bitter, so they assigned the contracts, we're now working on getting the mayor's signature, the law directors, and so forth. On the new parade ground, we did put that on our website, sent it to all the different presses, then put out all the social media, so any help putting that out, I would be grateful, so we don't have people going in the wrong spots. And one last thing, I did receive a letter over the weekend that pending final fee approval, but I don't see a problem, we are CRS classification will be going from an eight to a seven. So that means five percent more reduction on our citizens' blood insurance, so that should start April first of two thousand twenty-three. That's all I have.
Good, thank you, Mr. Gates. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Gates? Mr. Robb.
Here, I mentioned the repairs to culvert on Technology Parkway, that's now going to take place while the Broadway intersection is closed down, is it?
I'm serious.
It is not, because that's part of the deed to order. I'm glad you brought it up. All right, let's leave it at that.
Any other comments or questions? Excellent, let's move forward to new business, anyone have any new business to be brought before council this evening? Here we go, we'll move forward to unfinished business. Been nothing new on the future use of Main Street Fire Station, nor any new news on the former Ice Plant property. Is there any other unfinished business? Mr. Gates.
No, nothing new, but a question, what, what is our relationship with Mama's Pizza?
In regard to?
Well, the former Ice Plant property. Do we, do they, do they have a lease with us?
Yeah, Mr. John, John, I'm going to find that, please.
We had just recently signed a treaty with, with Mama's Pizza.
Mr. Gates.
Mayor, how is that authorized? My understanding that any lease has to be authorized by city council.
We reviewed it, the old council reviewed.
I don't have that in front, I may not have it in front of me, I'm uncertain if that had auto-renews periods in that original lease or not, I'd have to dig it up and look at it.
Mr. Gates.
But, but hadn't that lease expired, and hadn't we given them notification, and weren't we only renting that property from month to month?
There was a, there was an assignment clause within the original contract, that the, the, the original contract was assigned from one party to the other.
And, and who were those parties, Mayor?
Yes, Brian Donner Miller signed it to Mr. Strager.
Mr. Gates.
Mayor, was, was there a break in the lease that, that the previous lease?
That's what I tend to have in front of me to legally advise you on that. If you could, you know, between, between us, we'll get that answered, at least my email here in the next couple of days. How best we can do this evening?
Again, my understanding is that whenever this city wants to sell or lease property, it takes specific action of city council to do that, to authorize that.
You gotta answer to all those things.
Okay, and I'll ask the clerk to put specifically Mama's Pizza on the agenda for the next council meeting.
Do you want to put, Mr. Gates, do you want to put former Ice Plant property slash Mama's Pizza?
However.
Yeah.
Yes, that's fine.
Look at that whole, that whole area as far as the study and so forth, okay.
Any other unfinished business? Let's move into legislation.
Orders number seven, two thousand twenty-two, amending section one thousand four hundred and eighty-one zero four exceptions to chapter one thousand four hundred and eighty, signs of codified ordinances of the city of Shelby.
The third reading.
Set.
We have a motion on Mr. Roberts and a second on Mr. Martin for the third reading of orders number seven, two thousand twenty-two, discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin.
Gate.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
Mr. Gates.
Yeah.
Orders number seven, two thousand twenty-two passes as third reading.
Who's passing the orders?
Second.
We have a motion on Mr. Roberts and a second on Mr. Gates for the passage of orders seven, number seven, two thousand twenty-two, discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin.
Gate.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Gates.
Yeah.
Orders number seven, two thousand twenty-two passes.
Resolution number thirty, two thousand twenty-two, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to enter into an agreement with Petty Farms LLC to install a culvert on Technology Parkway.
Put the resolution, we take it, pass it.
Sure.
We have a motion on Mr. Martin and a second on Mr. Roberts for the passage of resolution number thirty, two thousand twenty-two, discussion. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I sat through the utilities committee meeting last week where this was discussed in, in apparent detail, and it was touched on also during the committee's report. I'm, I'm struggling to find, struggling to understand how this expenditure is a public, is, yeah, is a public purpose. I'm, I'm struggling to see how the, the public as a whole benefits from this. It makes changes to two lakes which are private property. I understand that there is some storm drainage that drains into them. But again, I, I just don't see that this is a public, the, the, the public benefits from this expenditure of money. I think, I think primarily it's the private property owner who benefits from it.
Mr. Martin.
I think, Mayor, my understanding, and of course, Mr. Isman can, you know, black, never tell me I'm wrong, but my understanding is that the, the way that the natural drainage, stormwater movement of that area is supposed to go from east to west, and it doesn't currently. And as a result, whenever there is a break in the, we'll call it the natural environmental movement of stormwater, it becomes our responsibility to ensure that that is done well. That was the explanation that was given to me, and I may be doing, not doing justice, but that was the explanation that was given to me by Mr. Isman in the committee meeting specifically about the, the reason why it was a, for lack of a better term, a city problem and not a, a residence problem. The other issue is there's not a clear delineation in ownership of the problem that could be assigned to a particular property or even properties in that area. And I think this is an issue that we've come alongside of the pond on the, the west side, that I've dealt with a couple of issues out there, and we've, as a city, helped rectify those issues by helping with some drainage tile and on the, the west side of that pond to help that movement go, and we already did the work on this culvert unsuccessfully, but we were trying, our first steps trying to balance the water level during that period of time as well, so it was a two-step process. The east side of the road, trying to lower some pipes, but on the, also the west side of the exit from that eastern pond. Again, these are not technical terms, right? I'm just trying to explain the way it was explained to me. So we already tried, we've already exerted city expense to try to fix this problem unsuccessfully, so this is really the second attempt of us trying to rectify the situation out there. And again, it really has not much to do with the properties per se, it really has to do with making sure that stormwater moves how it's supposed to move.
Mr. Gates.
Mr. Martin said that, that water currently, doesn't currently flow from the east pond to the west pond. Are the two culverts there blocked?
Mr. Gates.
No, the culvert's not blocked, and the elevations are higher than they should be. When they were setting the cranes, when, when the area was developed, they were set a little higher than they were, they were designed to be. So we cannot, we cannot change the way the water flows, and there's natural flow of stormwater from the east to the west. Whether it's from barn fields from the east, which naturally travel over to the, the waterways, essentially its way to Sultan Creek and so on, we cannot alter that. And right now, it's, it's not allowing that flow naturally to occur.
I think it was statement two, excuse me. But the, the, that detention area on the right side is deteriorating because it's not functioning properly.
You said, you said the right side.
On the east side, yeah. Yeah, on the east side, yeah, yeah, east.
Thank you.
On the east side, you know, that it's, it's kind of deteriorating and it's not getting better. Pause it, because of the stagnant nature of the stagnant weather. So they're, they're not, oh, they're, Mr. Roberts, actually, I had a thought about that.
So the water is flowing from the east to the west, and then from the west eventually into Seltzer Creek. But at different elevations than, than had been designed. And of course, how it's designed will, you know, where we have heavy rain, how it was designed is going to be irrelevant anyways because the water's going to do what the water does.
Yeah, if I can offer a crude drawing here, so this paper is going to make great radio for people that are listening to the, but anyways, this paper is the, kind of the, the natural elevation of where these pipes are supposed to be. Okay, or, sorry, there we go. But this is the, the pond to the east. The pipes are actually elevated. If you actually look over, if you go to the side of the road and you look at them, you can actually see the culvert and the pipes are up here and the water's down here. And so as time goes on, the water keeps on going and eroding underneath these pipes, but they're not actually going through the pipes to the westerns. They're on proper western trajectory. Unless there's a significant, significant rain event that raises the water, but the natural water elevation is getting worse and further, the pipes are going further down. So we're essentially, they're going to be lowering the pipes to help. And again, they were originally designed that way, but the way they were put in was faulty. And what we did initially is we tried to build this area underneath the pipes up. This was a couple of years ago. We tried to build up the area underneath these pipes so that the water would kind of go up to the pipe, but that has not been successful. So again, that's some kind of crude offering of what's going on there, but that's...
Mr. Rob.
I actually saw a crew out there a couple of years ago when they were attempting to do that, stopped to talk to them about that. And the issue is that if it's continued, allowed to continue the way it is, eventually it's going to destroy the roadway and then we're going to have a bigger problem. So what's happening is the water is actually flowing underneath the culvert and, and taking with that the soil, which means that eventually the roadway's going to collapse into that hole and now we're going to have a twenty-seven thousand dollar problem. We're going to have a hundred thousand dollar problem. And the best way to correct it is do it this way and do it now.
Well, I, I thank Mr. Rob for that explanation. You know, that had been mentioned last week during the committee meeting, that the water was, you know, flowing underneath the culverts and undermining the road. That changes things greatly, so I, I want to thank him for, you know, sharing that information. The other thing, it may be more technical, but the, the Finance Director, not technical, nerdy maybe, the, the Finance Director is certified from four oh two, which in our monthly sheet is listed as the Sewer Improvement Fund. But isn't that reality, in reality, the Sanitary Sewer Capital Improvement Fund?
That's also the Stormwater Improvement Fund as well. Over a year ago, council passed legislation that blended the sanitary surcharge and the stormwater surcharge blended into one fund, two different collections.
That answers that question. Well, let me, let me piggyback a little bit there for me. I, you know, my, my most recent, the utility bill, and it says here, the Sanitary Sewer Capital Improvement. So it would seem that that label, that, that name here is, is not reflective of what that fund is, what that collection truly is.
Revised. We'll check, we'll check after that.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin.
Gate.
Mr. McGlaughlin.
Here.
Mr. Rob.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Gates.
Resolution number thirty-two thousand twenty-two passes.
Resolution number thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Authorizing the mayor, as director of public safety of the City of Shelby, to apply for the Community Giving Grant from TC Energy for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus bottles in clearing emergency.
Take that back.
Second.
We have a motion on Mr. Roberts and a second on Mr. Gates for the passage of resolution number thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Discussion.
Okay, I, I don't know if the chief wishes to add anything to this.
Bring a little comment to this?
Make it worth its while to come to council.
Uh, these bottles are the end of life. The wish, you got these with the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Fund, fifteen years ago, it's hard to believe. So they're the end of life, you know, every five years you have to go through a pass fail test. For some reason, they're expired. So I think this is a shot, we'll try it. This frees up some money for some other projects we want to do to upgrade some equipment, uh, if we get it. If not, we got to do it, they expire at the first part of next year. So we're going to have to make a move. Well, I was planning on doing that next year, and I'm looking at timeframes and I was like, yeah, I could better do one of those. So this grants a shot. I wish I could give you more information on it, but a lot of grants now, you go page by page, and it doesn't open anything else up, so you fill a whole page out. So we'll give it a shot and see what we have.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts.
Did I, I didn't put it in my report, I don't think, those are nine hundred dollars a bottle? Is that what I remember?
And there's only, there's only two places you can get them in the state of Ohio. I've got both bids, one beat the other one, we're getting basically one bottle for free. We'll just try it.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Chief. Oh, Mr. Martin.
I just, just a little side comment. I really appreciate the administration and the culture that we have as a city where we have a, a bunch of our chiefs and our department heads that are consistently looking for grants and things to do to improve their departments without just have, they're default paying, just coming to city council and the general fund. And the amount of money that we've been able to save the citizens of Shelby because of that culture that we've cultivated within our city really should be applauded. And so this is just, you know, an example of that. There have been a lot of times where we've come here and they've said, I don't know if we're going to get it, but we'll try, and other cities took themselves out of the running and go, we get it. And so it's, it's just a really wonderful culture to have, and it's part of all of us being good stewards of the city's resources. So kudos to the chief and kudos to the administration and the culture that we've cultivated.
Very good, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin.
Gate.
Mr. McGlaughlin.
Here.
Mr. Rob.
Here.
Mr. Gates.
Resolution number thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two passes. For miscellaneous business, miscellaneous business to be brought before council. Mr. Martin.
Close to the last meeting before Memorial Day. So just like to offer up just a reminder that Memorial Day is not Veterans Day. It has nothing to do with me or my service or my colleague's service. It has to do with those who are no longer with us because they gave the ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms. So just make sure that as we're enjoying the, enjoying the hot dogs and the baseball games to take a moment and reflect and be thankful for all that we have as a result of the literal blood, sweat and tears that those have gone before us.
You're here. Thank you. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I'm in council adjournment.
Second. We have a motion on Mr. Gates and a second on Mr. Martin for adjournment. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin.
Gate.
Mr. McGlaughlin.
Here.
Mr. Rob.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Gates.
Here.
Council adjourns at seven fifty-nine.
Works fast, there's no...